Less than one minute. Six o'clock, Mayor.
We're going to call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
We'll now take public comments on closed session items. Is there any public comment? Please come forward.
Thank you, Mayor Currie and members of the council. My name is Jim Mosher. And thank you for this opportunity to comment on your closed session. Last November, as you may recall, the people of Newport Beach, justifiably concerned, it now appears, about the specter of their representatives voting to deploy automated traffic enforcement systems in our city, chucked out those parts of our city charter that formerly required all of your meetings to be open to the public and replaced them with ones that required only that you adhere to the Brown Act. One of the requirements of the Brown Act is that to ensure that the public is well-informed about what you're talking about in closed session, that the items to be discussed there not only need to be listed on the agenda, but they need to be announced orally before you close the door. You'll find that requirement in California Government Code, Section 54957.7, and I think it's an important provision. You have been very good about asking the city attorney to provide the required report at the end of the closed session, but I rarely hear the equally important announcement that you're required to make before you start. That announcement would seem to me to be an excellent opportunity for the mayor, as the council's chief spokesman to the public, to inform the public about the issues that you face that are so sensitive, you need to speak about them out of public view. As an illustration, item A on tonight's closed session agenda is discussion of a lawsuit in the local Superior Court called Lookout Point Alliance versus the City of Newport Beach. Assuming we are all part of Newport Beach, I wonder if someone could explain briefly what that case is about and what aspect of it you need to resolve tonight? Or do the people of Newport Beach need to resort to a Public Records Act request to learn what situations our city finds itself in? If the latter is the case, please regard this as a Public Records Act request, to see any papers that were filed against the city in that case. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further public comment, we will go to closed session.
Seven o'clock, Mayor.
Going to reconvene the meeting. Roll call, please.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
Mr. City Attorney, is there a closed session report?
There is no closed session report this evening, Mayor Currie.
Let me invite the audience to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Councilman Selich, and please remain standing for the invocation, which will be led by the Reverend Robert Jordan Ross of the Newport Universal Society.
Follow me in the pledge to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible.
Great God, we take this moment to thank you for the privilege of being able to meet in freedom at this hour. We thank you also for the ability to enjoy the glorious liberty of being your children and for this, our council, to have the power to work for those things to which you call us, to be able to move in new directions, and if we fail, to rise up again and tackle them in new ways, to restore your creation to its original glory and to preserve the beauty of your world. Help this council as it works to support our citizens in their efforts to do these things, and also for their work to increase the wealth that we enjoy, the moral quality of the lives you give us, and the cooperative works that ennoble our lives. May the standards that this council upholds in civic affairs also be an inspiration and a guide to our children, as they grow and observe and participate in the civic life of our community, that they in turn may also become such people of honor and probity who can lead Newport Beach into its future. Amen.
Amen. Notice to the public.
Presentations, Mayor?
No, we'll do that later.
Okay. The city provides a yellow signing card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the city council. If the optional signing card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium. The City Council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are generally limited to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The city council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As a courtesy, please turn cell phones off or set them in the silent mode. Now is the time for city council announcements or matters which council members would like place on our future agenda for discussion, action, or report.
Councilmember Diggle.
Yes, the latest from the City Recreation Department. Lots of exciting things coming up. On April 5th, they have the local youth track meet of champions. On April 6th, they have the Marine Protected Area Hike at Crystal Cove State Marine Conservation Area. On April 8th, they have Buck Gully Hike, so you see the flowers and the wildlife in Buck Gully. And I want to recognize Councilmember Gardner's leadership to make that happen. That was really a legacy for generations to come. And then on May 11th, there's Lawn Bowling Open House. On May 17th, 19th, the Field of Honor at Castaways Park. And May 18th is going to be the day where there's the ceremony. And on June 15th is the Estuary Awareness Day at Back Bay Science Center. So I can really see the Parks Department, the Recreation Department's getting very involved with some of our natural places here in Newport Beach. I think that's wonderful. For more information, contact the Recreation and Senior Services Department at 644-3151. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hinn.
A few things, Mr. Mayor. I would like to make sure the public is aware, we're going to have a Balboa Village Advisory Committee meeting on Wednesday, that's tomorrow, March 13th, at Explore Oceans Facility down in Balboa Village at 4:00 PM. We will be finalizing our thinking regarding maintenance programs for the village, enhanced maintenance programs, I should say, as well as looking at the work programs for the Commercial Facade Subcommittee that we formed and the Parking Program Subcommittee. So that should be a good meeting, and I hope we get as much public input as possible at that meeting. The Tidelands Management Committee meeting will be meeting on Monday, March 18th, at Oasis at 4:00 PM. This committee, by its current authorization, is due to sunset at the end of March, and we will be principally discussing at this meeting what the evolved role of the Tidelands Management Committee might be if it were to continue and be reauthorized for a longer period of existence. And then, I did want to let everyone know, we're going to have another annual police appreciation breakfast. That's on Thursday, March 21st, at the Island Hotel for the early birds that would like to join. I'm sure most of the members of council and many members of staff and a large number of community members to honor our police and their service to our community. It begins at 7:15 AM. Drink a lot of coffee. Then, we're having another event yet that night, so we're going to start early and finish late. On Thursday, March 21st, Mess Night for the Marines of the First Battalion, First Marines. This is the group that the City of Newport Beach has adopted for charitable purposes to raise funds for the benefit of the Marine families that are, whose principles are deployed overseas and who are otherwise disadvantaged by their service to our country. It's a great event. It's a lot of fun. It raises a lot of money for the benefit of our servicemen and women. That's at 6:00 PM at the Balboa Bay Club on Thursday, March 21st. And then lastly, we have a Finance Committee meeting. That's on Monday, March 26th at 4:00 PM. That's in the Old City Hall Conference Room. That may be one of the last meetings we hold there, given our pending move. And we're still working on the agenda for that, but those are always interesting meetings for those of you who are finance geeks, and I encourage you all to attend. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Selich.
Two items. First, I'd like to congratulate our staff on getting the Marina Park Lighthouse Project approved at the Coastal Commission. Had to overcome a negative staff recommendation on that, and really tough to do. That was really an important element to that project. We had a Citizens Committee that worked really hard over a number of years on that, and so congratulations to you guys for getting that through. I know it was really tough and job well done. Second thing is, this Saturday, November 16th, at the Balboa Island Fire Station, there's going to be a community—
March 16th.
Excuse me, March 16th. Rough week here so far. March 16th, there's going to be a community meeting at the Balboa Island Fire Station. It's 11:00 in the morning. It's to talk about the FEMA regulations on Balboa Island and how those are going to be implemented, the Park Avenue Bridge, the construction of that and the plan and design. Going to talk about the Grand Canal, seawalls and dredging in the Grand Canal, and then lastly, talking about the Bayside Walkway Connection. So again, that's this Saturday, the 16th, 11:00 at the Balboa Island Fire Station.
Thank you. Ms. Gardner.
Yes, tomorrow, Thursday, or Wednesday, March 13th. The Harbor Commission at 4:30 will be having a meeting to talk about concepts for the use of lower castaways, and this will be followed at 6:00 by the regular Harbor Commission meeting, and this is in council chambers in the Old City Hall. And then on Thursday, the 14th, 3:00, in the fire conference room at Old City Hall, the Water Quality Committee will be meeting. And then at 5:00 on that same day, at the library, the City Arch Commission will be meeting. Thank you.
Mr. Petrus.
I have nothing to report.
Mr. Hill.
Tomorrow evening at 6:00 PM, the Airport Working Group will be holding its annual meeting at the Balboa Yacht Club for those that might like to attend and have the most current update on what's going on with John Wayne Airport. And then in a bit of history, last week on Thursday morning, the Newport Beach Chamber of Commerce held its Governmental Affairs Meeting in a new format. We used the Friends' Room at the library for the meeting. There were about 70 individuals in attendance, and our keynote speaker was no one other than our city manager, Dave Kiff. And he did a very good job in covering every topic from City Hall to Tideland's leases to trash service, and did a good job of settling down the audience on each instance. And also called upon our police chief, Jay Johnson, to help in some of the question answers, and he seemed to be a hit of the day also. So very pleased when we see our senior staff out in public and dealing with them very well, so congratulate them on that.
Thank you. And I have several announcements for this evening. First of all, the special events application deadline is this Friday, March 15th. The City of Newport Beach supports the qualified local events of community groups through an annual review and funding process. Community event organizers can apply for financial support to help cover event costs such as equipment rentals and city permit fees. The application deadline, as I said, is this Friday, March 15th at 4:00 PM, and more information is available on the city website. I would also like to announce that on April 1st, we will commence the Mayor's Challenge for Water Conservation. This is the second annual Mayor's Challenge for Water Conservation, and will continue through April 30th. The Wyland Foundation, US EPA, and Toyota sponsor this friendly competition between cities to see who can be the most water-wise. Thanks to Mayor Gardner's challenge to Laguna Beach last year, Newport Beach finished in the top five cities in the Western United States. There's no cost to city or taxpayers for participating. The Mayor's Challenge is just a fun way for Newport Beach residents to save water and money and help the city meet its conservation goals. Residents even have the chance to win some prizes, including a Toyota Prius. There'll be more details at the next council meeting, and residents can visit the www.mywaterpledge.com to learn more about this year's Mayor's Challenge. The competition starts April 1st. In additional announcements, I was pleased to join several of my colleagues for the retirement event honoring Richard Lures. Richard spent most of his adult life as the CEO of the Newport Beach Chamber of Commerce. He has greatly influenced the growth and the development and the economic vitality of our community, and he will be sorely missed. It was great to see such a great crowd out to honor Richard's contributions over the years to our great city. I was also privileged to represent Newport Beach at the Retirement Party for Will Kempton, who was the outgoing CEO of the Orange County Transportation Authority. I've known Will now for more than 35 years. He was undoubtedly the best Caltrans director we ever had, did an outstanding job at OCTA, and measurably, through the projects that he helped approve, contributed to mobility here in our city. I also had the opportunity to go on Literacy Day to Newport Elementary School to read Dr. Seuss, which is harder than it sounds, let me tell you, to both the first graders and the fourth graders, and it was just a marvelous experience. And people were reading Dr. Seuss in schools across America that day as part of a national program. As some of you know, I sit on the Association of California Cities Pension Reform Committee, and this week we had a spirited conversation kicking off our work plan for this year to continue to advocate for legislative improvements to allow us to continue to reduce our pension costs. I was pleased to report that on a comparative basis, Newport Beach is doing very, very well relative to our, to the other cities, not only in the county but across California. And then on Friday, I had the opportunity to represent the city at the 49th Orange Coast Mayor's Prayer Breakfast, which was held in Irvine. Seven other mayors participated with me, and four or 500 people. It was really just a great event. And the speaker there was the pilot who was supposed to fly American Airlines Flight 11 on September 11th, and he was bumped at the very last minute and did not make that flight. It was just a remarkable story, and I wish you all could have seen it. And then on Saturday, I appeared with Troy Davis on KUCI Radio, our local public radio station, and had the opportunity to have a conversation about what's going on in the city and all the things that we're doing to help manage the city more effectively, and I hope you all had a chance to hear that. KUCI is a great community resource. Now, let me also make an announcement. I think we have a graphic for this while I'm doing it, because we have a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity taking place in support of the Marine Corps and Navy-related personnel who are considered to be wounded warriors on Friday, March 22nd, at the Newport Beach Pavilion Harborside Ballroom. This event will begin at 6:00 PM. Members of the Wounded Warrior Battalion at Camp Pendleton will be attending this event sponsored by Newport Beach Sunrise Rotary, along with their commanding officer. This is a completely unique, one-time event that the public may attend in support of these heroes and the equally courageous families. Tickets are only $150, and proceeds go to help wounded warrior families and incur no overhead. In other words, 100% of what you give to attend this event goes to the cause to support America's heroes and be a hero yourself while attending this rare event. For reservations, go to the web under Newport Beach Sunrise Rotary, or call 949-612-0992, which is the number I think you see on the TV screen with this poster. This is a great event. As you heard from Councilman Hinn, we have the annual Mess Night coming up. Newport Beach does a great job in supporting our Marines. They need it, and these are just marvelous causes. I encourage everybody here to participate in these events. Thank you. We'll now move on to the Consent Calendar.
Public comments on Consent Calendar. Public comments are invited on Consent Calendar Items 1 through 11. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. To the extent that any item is removed from the Consent Calendar by a council member, members of the public are invited to speak on each item for up to three minutes per item. All matters listed under Consent Calendar are considered to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. The city council has received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the city council votes on the motion unless members of the city council request specific items to be discussed and are removed from the Consent Calendar for separate action.
Does anyone have any items to remove from the Consent Calendar? Councilmember Gardner.
I have an amendment to the minutes, item number 10, which was Uptown Newport. I had said I would like to make a record of this, so I would like to make a record of this, that the applicant had agreed that smart timers would be required rather than simply suggested, and that the street sweeping would be weekly instead of once a year, whatever it was they had initially proposed. And then I would remove item number 11.
Okay. Mr. Petrus.
Yes, Mayor Currie, I, because of a prior business association with the applicant, will be recusing myself from item four, and I would like to pull item five.
Okay. Mr. Hill.
Nothing.
Councilmember Diggle.
No items to pull, but I did want to note that item number 10, which is the quarterly business report, is very well-prepared and very informative.
Mr. Hinn.
I have nothing.
Mr. Selich?
No items.
And I have no items. So we will now go to public comments on matters on the Consent Calendar which were not pulled, which were items 5 and 11. So is there any public comment on the Consent Calendar except for items 5 and 11? Please come forward.
Thank you, Mayor Currie and members of the council. My name is Jim Mosher. I would just like to highlight the written comment I submitted earlier about item number four, which is Uptown Newport. I wasn't aware of this and hadn't really paid attention while the approval was going by, but at the Planning Commission last week, we learned that projects of these sorts are supposed to have a fiscal impact analysis called out in the general plan, and I was not aware of seeing that for Uptown Newport. Could have been there somewhere in the 5,000 pages, but I didn't notice it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other comments on the Consent Calendar except for items 5 and 11? All right, seeing that, I'll bring it back. Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I would move the approval of this Consent Calendar with the exception of items number 5 and 11, and also noting Councilman Petrus's recusal on item number four.
And Councilmember—
I'll second that.
And Councilmember Gardner's changed the minutes.
And her change of the minutes of number—
Four, or the minutes, whatever they are.
The minutes, yeah.
Okay, a motion and a second. Please vote.
One moment. Okay, go ahead. Playing on my screen as motion carries unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Item 5, Mr. Petrus.
Yes, Mayor Currie, no issue with this other than to make a few remarks. I just wanted to have the community know that the city has had numerous iterations of the bicycle committees dating back to 2009, and the membership in those committees has really reflected a cross-section of our community. Meetings have been consistently well-attended, indicating that there is interest in this issue and focus on this topic. As a result of those committees' efforts, we have improved driver and cyclist awareness of laws and of each other, elevated the discourse from anger and difference to similarities and solutions, and implemented real projects for the overall benefit and safety of the Newport Beach public. This proposal will allow the city to complete a comprehensive master plan, and in so doing, we make a statement of our commitment to a healthy community. We're going to create a reference document for all future circulation planning in Newport Beach and give the council and the staff real tools to become competitive for outside funding for bicycle commuter projects and projects to enhance safety around our schools for our children. I just, in closing, would like to remark, I want to thank my fellow councilmember, Mr. Selich, for bringing this forward at the priority-setting meeting, and look forward to action on this item.
Thank you. Any other council comments on this matter? Seeing that, let me open it up to the public. Are there any members of the public who'd like to speak on this matter? Please come forward.
Mayor, members of the city council, my name is Frank Peters. I have served on the Bike Safety Task Force in 2009 and 10, and last year on the Bicycle Safety Committee. I am in favor of this oversight committee and look forward to contributing. I wanted to make note here, it's interesting timing tonight as we consider this, it's the six-month anniversary of when Betty Bustrum was hit by a truck and a trailer on Coast Highway at Dover. And then, of course, as we all remember, the next two subsequent days, we had cycling fatalities on our roadways. So I appreciate the effort to establish this new committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Peters, is there any other public comment? Seeing that, I'll bring it back to the council. Is there a motion?
I would move to approve this item.
Second?
Second.
Motion second? Please vote. There we go.
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Item 11, Councilmember Gardner.
Yes, this one is, I kept reading it and kept reading it, it didn't become clearer to me. Is this work that we would have done despite the project, or is this work that's done because of the project, or is this, I mean, it's part and partial, or what?
Yes, thank you. The work that was actually reimbursed in this, or requesting reimbursement, is work that we would have done despite the project. The city sewer master plan called for the replacement of a sewer on Exhibit B midway up the slope. When the developer was conditioned to replace the sewer going across his property, we worked with him and found an alternative alignment behind his property, which is a longer alignment to connect to Dover. By doing that, we also removed the necessity for having the sewer at the mid-slope, and we're able to connect the laterals directly to that new sewer and connect all the properties.
So we feel this is a better project as a result? I mean, as far as the sewer system?
It turned out much better for the sewer system and the applicant.
Okay. Well, thank you. I will move the item.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion at the council, Diaz? Is there any public comment on this matter? Please come forward.
Thank you, Mayor Curry, and members of the council. Of all the items on the consent calendar, this is the one that concerns me the most. My name is Jim Mosher. It may not have been clear from the discussion, this is a bill presented to the city from former Mayor Todd Ridgway, expecting reimbursement for sewer work that he claims he was promised reimbursement for by a city employee. I'm pretty sure you wouldn't be paying me for privately changing the city's sewer system with or without the blessing of a city employee, and I don't see why a former mayor should be treated any differently. Moreover, I don't think you can legally pay this bill, even if you wanted to. First, the work appears to have been done before the charter was changed by Measure EE, and the charter was very clear then that Mr. Ridgway would have had to have either a written agreement from the city publicly approved by you, the council, or a written or oral agreement made by the city manager to perform a service that had been publicly approved by you in our annual budget. The staff report provides absolutely no evidence that Mr. Ridgway obtained any of that, nor is it even precisely clear from the itemized so-called bill that you have there exactly what he is billing us for. Next, the city charter last year required Mr. Ridgway to submit his bill not to you but to the Finance Director, and only after the Finance Director had rejected it would you be in a position to overrule that decision. And even then, you could not do that because the people of California, through our constitution, prohibit both you and the Finance Director from paying on an agreement that was made without proper authority of law. Paying Mr. Ridgway just because he happens to be a former colleague of several of yours would be very poor public policy. In fact, it is all the more reason not to pay him because of all people, he should have known that the public's business is not allowed to be conducted by informal, unwritten backdoor promises. Please reject this demand. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher. Mr. Harp, do you have some comments that you'd like to make relative to those observations?
Yes. The charter provisions that Mr. Mosher is referencing deal with claims and demands. This is somewhat different than the sections he's referencing and would not be applicable. In this instance, it is appropriate for you to go ahead and ratify the decision and the agreement that was made, and go ahead and pay the claim to the extent that you decide you want to go that route. There's no issue with ratifying the decision.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment on this matter? All right, seeing that, I'll bring it back to the council. Please vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. We're now ready for public comments on non-agenda items.
Public comments are invited on non-agenda items generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
Anyone who wishes to make a public comment, please come forward.
A dog looks like it's grown a lot in the last week or a couple weeks.
Yes, April 27th, she goes off to college, so I think we're very excited about that. Stephanie Berger, resident of Corona Del Mar and executive director of Earth Resource Foundation, something really fun for everybody, on this Sunday, April, or March 17th, at the OC Fairgrounds, we're having the St. Patty's Day Celebration and a green festival. It will be inside the OC marketplace, so if you bring a pair of used glasses that will be donated to Lions Club, you'll get in for free. We have free ice cream. We have four high schools that will be doing presentations. We have an eco fashion show where the models will be wearing clothes made out of old plastic bags, river rafts, all kinds of fun stuff. So we'd love to have you all out. Newport Harbor High School will be there doing their presentations, and we'd love to have you support them. And we're also doing a fundraiser at Bob's Ice Cream, so if you buy an ice cream, 100% of the proceeds goes to Earth Resource and our youth programs. And I'd also, just a couple other things, thank you for the bicycle plan. I think it's very important, and it'd be great to get some of our college students involved. I know Google has some great maps, and partner with all the other cities and make it a regional plan, which I know you've been working on. And then I would, since Mr. Moreland left, he keeps threatening to retire. Mr. Moreland runs the Surf and Environmental Class at Newport Harbor and has been the impetus for our smoke-free beaches and our styrofoam ban, and he's probably going to retire this year, and if there's any way that we could recognize him for his years and years of great service to our community at so many levels, I greatly appreciate that. And then on the styrofoam issue, Apoyo Loco over on Bristol keeps violating the styrofoam ban, and then Rendezvous Bakery or whatever in Corona Del Mar, they need some education. They'd like some help with it in French, if possible. So we are being diligent in looking at the businesses to see if they're still using styrofoam. And part of that's just to applaud and support the businesses that have really gone beyond the styrofoam ban into truly environmentally responsible products. Most of you, our restaurants are doing a wonderful job, and that means they care about our community and it cares about their customers. So I'm going to leave these, and I just invite you all to come out on March 17th, and we look forward to seeing you. Thanks so much. Bye-bye.
Thank you, Stephanie. If you'll leave some information with the city clerk about the teacher, we'll see if we can find an appropriate recognition for that gentleman. Okay, Ms., did you want to come forward? Just state your name, please.
I'm Jody Horowitz.
And I'm Molly Chase.
We're both sophomores at Sage Hill School. The real. I guess kind of going off of that, I'm sure that you guys have heard this numerous times, and we all know that plastic bags are bad for the environment, but I think we can all use some more education on what are the benefits of banning the plastic bag. And so those are primarily educational, economic, and environmental. So educational, of course. When we do ban plastic bags and we give education to the students, especially middle school and high school students who can take the initiative to continue to promote ecologically sound products, then we give our next generation the tools that they need to... Act more responsibly. Yeah, to act more responsibly and more environmentally responsible, and educate even further into our next generations. And then economic, of course. California alone spends $25 million each year on beach cleanups just picking up plastic bags alone. And those aren't even, that's not even including the plastic bags that surf rider picks up or private beach cleanups pick up. So that's $25 million wasted on picking up plastic bags that we could be spending elsewhere. And so, of course, when you have a tax on paper bags in grocery stores or in other places as well, then you can, then the city gets funding from that tax, which, you know, is of course good for the city. And then, of course, there's the environmental factors. These plastic bags are made of number four PET plastic, which is not biodegradable. In fact, when, most of these plastic bags, they end up in the landfills and the ones that don't end up in the ocean. Unfortunately, these do not biodegrade, they photodegrade. So they break down into tiny pieces, which are eaten by the fish, and then these, in toxins in the fish. And then these toxins bioaccumulate up through the food chain, and the larger fish that we eat still have the toxins from the PET plastic, which is yet another reason to ban.
So ultimately, what we're proposing, sorry, is a ban on plastic bags and a tax on paper bags. I have here an example of an ordinance passed in Santa Clara, I guess, can I give that to you to look at?
With the city clerk, and she'll take it when you're done? Yes, thank you.
Well, it's basically, that's the reason why we're doing it. And if you need more information, I'm holding, we're both holding an event at the Oasis Center on Thursday, April 18th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., playing the environmental documentary Baguette. I sent an email to Nancy Gardner, and if you guys would attend, that would be amazing to learn more about banning plastic bags, and we're going to pursue this further if you're not interested.
Laguna and LA have already taken the initiative, so please consider it. It's a great program, and banning plastic bags, it'll have, you know, it'll have great benefits for years to come. So thank you.
Thank you both very much for coming down to visit with us tonight. Are there any other speakers? Please come forward.
Mayor Curry and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. As you know, my interest in city government dates to my receipt a few years back of a notice informing me that the city, whatever that is, had decided apparently in a complete vacuum of information and public input, that it was in the city's interest to have cellphone transmitting antennas installed on public property at eye level in front of my view windows, and that when that applicant withdrew the application, I understood it was in the city's interest to ask them back. That and something that happened last week leads me tonight to want to make a comment about representative government and this strange corporate entity that we call the city. Last week, the California Coastal Commission met in San Diego to discuss two issues of interest to the citizens of Newport Beach and to the public at large. One was whether we should build a fake lighthouse at Marina Park, and the other was whether we should remove the fire rings from our beaches. A few Newport Beach residents were there expressing their personal opinions, and there were also representatives there from this entity we call the city, telling the commission what the city's position was. Now, I appreciate that taking clear and decisive positions is sometimes called leadership, and that if your positions do not mirror ours, we have the option to vote you out. That is what representative government is. But when the city manager is quoted in the press as saying that the city was gratified by the coastal commission's decisions, and the city will be back to ensure that the fire rings are removed, he may be doing exactly what you told him to do, but I would guess you are making about half of your constituents, who do not share those particular positions, feel alienated and betrayed and wondering what is the city that you represent. Perhaps the illusion of unity would be justifiable if you were truly leading us, but as for leadership on the fire ring issue, I would note that when, almost exactly a year ago, March 13th, 2012, after patiently listening to the public testimony, which was about equally divided pro and con, you voted to instruct the city manager to take one side. You did so in startling silence without any of you explaining to us, the public, why you were taking the side you did. The reasons for choosing that side may have been self-evident to you, but you made no effort to lead me to that position, and in fact, you left me wondering if I am part of the city that you claim to represent. Thank you.
Are there any other speakers? All right, seeing that, I'm going to close public comment and bring it back. Oral reports from city council members on committee activities. Ms. Gardner?
Nothing.
Mr. Petros?
Working backwards, Mayor Curry, I fail to recollect that I had the opportunity to read, as you did, to students at Newport Heights School, the second-grade class of Mrs. Middleton, and I will tell you that that is quite a class of learners. I had a great time. We did some Shell Silverstein, and we read a letter from Mother Earth. So quite an afternoon of good times with them.
Bill?
Nothing. Thank you.
Councilmember Daigle?
Several things going on. The Affordable Housing Task Force, it's a council committee, and we're going to be convening in next month after our community outreach. So we'll hear a little bit from the public and then make some decisions as to the direction we're going with this. There's an item later on the agenda this evening. It's initiating a general plan amendment for our housing element, and part of California state law mandates that all cities adopt a general plan, which provides for the orderly development of a city. And among the mandatory elements is a housing element. And so this time, the state is willing to give us an eight-year certification, which is unprecedented. The main emphasis on our element this time is simply updating it. We've already sort of built the item, the element, and a lot of work over the years went into that. The planning director is going to be providing a schedule, and as indicated at the end of the march, we have our community workshop. Now, the basis for our statistical information about our community is the 2010 census, and I've asked the staff to post that on the website. A couple of things about our city as it compares with the county. We're older. We travel less time to work. We shop a lot. And the county retail sales is, per person, $9,900 per year, and here in Newport Beach, we spend on average $18,300 per year shopping. We also have lower home ownership. About 54.5% of our homes are owned compared to the county, which is 61.5%. And that rental stock is what really helps us to provide affordable housing. So look for more on affordable housing in Newport Beach in our housing element. And then as far as the aviation committee goes, there's a couple vacancies. They're both alternate positions, but that's not a problem. If you're an alternate, you can also come to the meetings. You're treated the same way as the regular member. You sit at the table, you participate. Those vacancies are in District 1, Councilman Henn's district, and in my district, and the city clerk is accepting applications in those areas. And then tomorrow night, the mayor is going to be giving, I think, the keynote address at AWG Airport Working Group, and that's one of our two main groups here in Newport Beach, citizen groups, and the topic of his speech is going to be the settlement agreement. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hinn?
Yes, one item. The Finance Committee met on Thursday, February 28th, in the old council conference room. It was a thoroughly engrossing and exciting agenda, having to do with, first, an exit conference with our city's auditors. This is an opportunity for council members to meet directly with the outside auditors regarding the city's year-end financial report dated June 30th, 2012. And it's an opportunity for us to ask questions directly, and also, we take the opportunity to meet without staff present with the auditors to discuss anything they wish to disclose to us or we wish to ask of them. And I'm happy to report that the auditor- And also, we take the opportunity to meet without staff present with the auditors to discuss anything they wish to disclose to us or we wish to ask of them. And I'm happy to report that the auditors were very pleased with the course of our audit of our financial statements, had no items of disagreement with our city staff regarding those financial statements. They did have one item of what's called a management recommendation, which staff agreed with and will implement. So, once again, we've passed with flying colors our annual audit. Congratulations to Dan Matusiewicz. Matusiewicz. That's pretty close. Our Director of Finance for yet again managing that process so well on our behalf. And then we talked about accounting changes having to do with something called OPEB. That's Other Post-Employment Benefits. That's benefits after employment not having to do with pensions, such as health care. And this is a complex area of accounting and actuarial analysis. The accounting rules have changed, and that will result in more conservative handling of certain matters relating to these OPEB obligations on the part of the city. That will likely result in a fairly significant increase in the city's unfunded liabilities related to those items. It will not have an impact on the city's financial standing or on its annual budget or operating requirements. So this is a matter of accounting interest, and I'm sure some folks will want to make something more of it. But in our case, no impact on the circumstances of our city, the financial circumstances. And then we had an opportunity to discuss actuarial issues and accounting for pension benefits for the city. We currently have a fairly large unfunded liability for pensions. And we have been working hard as a council in conjunction with city staff to find ways to reduce and limit the size of that unfunded liability. And we've been fairly successful with that. One way to do that is for city employees to make larger contributions toward the cost of those requirements. Another is to limit or reduce the level of employment in the city. Fewer employees means lower liability for pension benefits in the long run. We've also found that there is one thing that we can elect to do that would further reduce our pension unfunded liability, and that is to elect voluntarily to amortize those liabilities in a more conservative way than others might, or that is currently being conducted by the city. And after a pretty thorough discussion of a lot of detail, the finance committee concluded it would recommend, for full council approval, a fixed 30-year amortization regimen for dealing with these liabilities that, over time, would likely reduce our unfunded liability by roughly 50% of what it currently is, all other things being equal. So this is an opportunity that, although it will cost more cash flow in the long run for the city, will allow us to make even further progress in reducing this liability. And that's my report.
Thank you, Mr. Henn and Mr. Selich. New reports. And I think, Mr. Hill, you had something else you wanted to comment on?
Something much lighter than the last one. Councilman Daigle said something that reminded me that, three weeks ago, I had the opportunity of visiting Sacramento and spent the weekend wandering around the Capitol and noticed the Orange County display as a very sad display. It's very old and very outdated. And if anyone on our staff knows anyone on the county staff that might be responsible for that, and it doesn't even mention Newport Beach. There's not a picture of Newport Beach or a comment of Newport Beach. So I think it's time that we would suggest that the county get this act together and do something about the marketing of this county in the state Capitol.
And I have no report. So we'll go to public hearings, item 12, the Woody's Wharf use permit appeal.
Mr. Mayor, I must recuse myself on this item because I own property within 500 feet of the applicant's property.
Thank you. So noted. Is there a staff report, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Curry. Members of the council, good evening. I'm Kimberly Brandt, the Community Development Director. This is an appeal of a use permit that was granted to Woody's Wharf, backed by the Planning Commission in November of last year. The Woody's Wharf applicant team has submitted a request for a use permit regarding the hours of operation on their outdoor dining area, as well as the ability to allow dancing within the interior of the restaurant. The Planning Commission did grant the use permit, but did modify the original request. And subsequent to the Planning Commission's action, Woody's Wharf did appeal that action to you, the city council. So again, that was last November. Subsequent to the filing of their appeal, staff has been working with the applicant regarding some options for enclosing their outdoor patio area. Originally, there had been discussion to that effect, but because of some existing parcel lines and building code issues, the enclosing of the patio had not been pursued further. Subsequent to filing of the appeal, we've been working with the building official to see if there is a type of design that could meet the building code and subdivision map requirements and still provide an enclosure that would result in sound attenuation. We believe that is something that could be achieved with the proper design and construction. The applicant is wanting to pursue the enclosure of the outdoor patio area, but that does require a variance from the zoning code, and that is not a part of this application. The applicant then wishes to return back to the Planning Commission with an amended application to consider the enclosure of the outdoor patio area, as well as an additional noise study that they had recently completed. Staff is recommending that the city council refer this item back to the Planning Commission so the application can be amended to include those additional elements for the Planning Commission to review and take action. And at that point, that action would be appealable back to the city council by either the applicant or any other interested party.
Okay, thank you. How many people are here on this matter tonight? The recommended action by the staff is to refer this back to the Planning Commission for further work. And it sounds like you're trying to be responsive to at least some of the issues that were raised. And it gives you another opportunity at the Planning Commission to voice your opinions on what's going to be a new proposal than what's in front of us today. So you have the right to speak tonight, but you can use your own judgment because I would encourage you to wait to see what the final disposition is at the Planning Commission and then so that we're all talking about what's really on the table to talk about. So we're not going to take any action to approve anything today.
Well, wait a minute. Again, don't we need to vote on sending it back?
We do.
Okay, well.
We do.
Well.
Okay. I'm just, okay. Fair enough. With that, let me open the public hearing then and invite the applicant, as is the protocol, to come forward, if you would like to make a statement.
Mayor and members of the council, thank you for hearing our application tonight. My name is Mark Serventi. I'm one of the four partners of Woody's Wharf. We've owned the business for about eight years now. We've been working with the city staff and Community Development Department to create a win-win situation for the city, for the community, and for Woody's Wharf. At the Planning Commission hearing of November of last year, the Planning Commission suggested that we conduct a noise study. Since that meeting, we've done that. We've conducted the noise study. We concurred with that recommendation. We asked for a continuance of the hearing at that time, and it was denied. They voted on the motions without the continuance. They denied our request for the continuance, and so we were left with no option but to appeal that to the city council. And that's why we're here tonight. We conducted that noise measurement study. It was intentionally done on a night that was busy so that Woody's would be full. There would be a lot of people there. It was a rather busy night. It was the week of the boat parade. The general conclusion of the survey, which I know it's not part of the application tonight, but the noise which is impacting those residents at the 28th Street Marina, it was very favorable to Woody's as to what the impacts of any noise in the neighborhood and where they were being generated. In January, we reached out to the residents of that Marina development and requested a meeting with them to go through that sound study and show them the conclusions of that. We had the consultant there to explain that. And we wanted to propose a solution to mitigate any of their concerns that they might have. That was denied. That was refused. They didn't want to meet with us at that point. In mid-January, the city staff got ahold of us and suggested that there might be an opportunity to cover the patio. We'd always embraced this option, and this was actually a suggestion from the residents of the Marina development. In February, the staff informed us that the patio cover would require a variance and could not be acted on by the city council until after the Planning Commission had acted upon the application. Even though the conclusions of the noise assessment was favorable to Woody's operations, we're still willing to meet and invest considerable capital in closing that patio to further eliminate the semblance, the idea, that there might be any noise coming from us. Contrary to certain beliefs, Woody's Wharf has been acting in good faith and trying to come up with a solution and come up with an equitable proposal. We've reviewed the email that I know each of the council members has received from one of the residents of the 28th Street Marina Homeowners Association. And I don't want to get into a debate regarding some of the statements and the veracity of those. But Woody's today is able to operate until 2:00 a.m. We're conditioned for that right now. We're still in favor of meeting with those residents. We'd love to hear what their concerns are. In addition, as late as last week, we proposed a meeting to them. To this point, we haven't heard back from them. They've been unwilling to meet with us. We're here tonight to request the support of the staff's recommendation to continue this to the Planning Commission to allow us to present some of the more current findings that came from the noise assessment that we've conducted. And I'm here to answer any questions that you or any of the staff might have.
Are there any questions for the applicant? Ms. Daigle.
Although I agree it should be remanded back to the Planning Commission, when I met with the residents, one of their criticisms is that the noise study was conducted while conditions are different than what's normally happening at Woody's. So can you speak to when the noise study was conducted?
Sure.
And does it reflect actual conditions?
I was there the night that the noise study was conducted. The one thing about Woody's, we've been lucky enough to build a business that's busy all the time on Friday and Saturday nights. We were at 100% capacity. We were full. It was the week of the boat parade, and we're typically full on a Friday and Saturday night. There's people waiting to get into our place. So, you know, one of the points of that letter was that it was a night during the winter when we're not that busy. That patio was full. Our sound consultant came in, actually walked the premises to make sure of what was going on before, during, and after that sound study. And at the end, he actually walked in there, and I had asked him why. And he said he wanted to make sure that the conditions were the same as when he first started that sound study, and that patio was full all night.
Thank you. Questions?
Mayor Curry. In that noise study, you say that the patio was full. Was there a DJ that evening?
There was.
And live music?
Yes.
Were there monitors, actual noise monitors, gathering information inside the restaurant?
They had, I think it was six points. They weren't inside the restaurant. No, they were at the perimeters of the property, as well as at the Marina building.
There were none inside the restaurant. Were there any at the sensitive receptors, the homes themselves?
Yes.
At the apartments?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any questions? Okay, thank you, sir. Let me invite any other members of the public that'd like to speak on this matter. Please come forward.
Would you like a motion before so they know?
That would be helpful, yes.
All right. Well, then I would move that we send it back to the Planning Commission because there is this new suggestion of coverage, not because we're dissatisfied with anything that necessarily they had conditioned.
Right, exactly. Do you want to second?
I'll second that motion, but after public comment, I'd like to perhaps add a few more thoughts.
Absolutely. Please, sir.
Sorry, Kent, but I beat you to it. Thank you, Councilman Mayor. My name is Christopher Rolfs. I live at 2700 Newport Boulevard. I prepared a lot of things, but I only have three minutes. I want to speak on behalf of the public safety in the immediate area. I've lived there for 20 years. I've worked and built a business out of that neighborhood. I have not been home up until the last seven to eight years, more so on the weekends and such. But on a public safety matter, the area is not an area that I would let any of my daughters, sons, nieces, or nephews frequent after 10:00 p.m., particularly on weekends, and not on any night during the summer. I was physically assaulted on the evening of February 9th, that's a Saturday night, at approximately 12 o'clock. There's a 911 call which addresses this, and I believe there should be a recording of that. I have seen nothing but huge numbers of gang-like younger kids. I'm only 52 years old, okay? And I'm in relatively good shape. I hurt myself skiing. That's why I walk kind of funny right now. But other than that, I just wanted to say that I feel threatened around the area now. And it's mostly right in front of 2700, 2800. It's not in front of the Crab Cooker. It's not in front of Avila's. It's that hotspot of Woody's, which has turned into basically a nightclub. They don't respect what their users permits are right now. That's been said, and that's been stated in long, voluminous letters. I just wanted to state, on a public safety factor, that I was assaulted. I called 911. They called back. At that point, this 25-year-old, he was a little fellow, but when 911 called back, they had already taken off in a cab, okay? And that was just one instance. That was a woman that was sitting down on the curb, directly in front of our building, that was intoxicated out of it and needed help. I offered her help. This young guy came from behind me, took a running leap into my back, didn't knock me over. But then, as a stranger came up, like a good Samaritan, like I was trying to be, came by in a vehicle, rolled his window down, and said, "Hey, I saw that guy jump you." I said, "Don't worry. I'm calling 911." As that was happening, that guy took a running leap, hit me again, then started punching me, and it's all history from there. That's the kind of thing. You're inviting more nightclubs. Woody's did not used to be this kind of volume and packing it in there. I don't care if they build it four stories tall. I know you won't permit that. But allowing them to continue serving as many people as they do does nothing but further, not enhance. It makes my home and where I choose to live a more dangerous place to live. I just want you to pay attention to that and listen to your planning committee because their interest is not on behalf of our safety, the residents, and the people that are coming down that are tourists. Please, Mayor, and I'm sorry I've been calling you. I apologize.
That's fine. Thank you, sir. I appreciate you coming down. The motion on the table is to refer this back to the Planning Commission, but if there's other public comment, please come forward.
And just briefly, Mayor Curry, I think the real decision tonight, just so the public knows, is whether or not to refer back to the Planning Commission or bring it back for a subsequent hearing on the merits. The consideration of the appeal on the merits will not happen this evening because it hasn't been prepared for that. So if the council doesn't send it back to the Planning Commission, there will be an opportunity to speak to the merits of the appeal.
Mayor Curry and members of the city council, my name is Kent Stoddard. I'm a resident at 2700 Newport Boulevard. I've been there for 20 years. I'm speaking on behalf of the 28th Street Marina Homeowners Association. I'm also a retired sergeant for the Newport Beach Police Department for our work for over 30 years. We ask that you do not send this matter back to the Planning Commission. Woody's sound measurement survey and new roof design concept do nothing to address the real issue of Woody's nightclub operation, its negative impact in our neighborhood, or its drain on police department resources. Sending this back to the Planning Commission serves no constructive purpose, but only further delays resolution of the issue. The real issue is that at 10:00 p.m., Woody's changes into a nightclub in violation of a number of its permit conditions. Sending this back to the Planning Commission doesn't change that fact. The police department opposes Woody's application because of the increased law enforcement that will be required. There is no food service at Woody's, not even appetizers, after 9:00 p.m. when the kitchen closes, 9:00 p.m. Only alcohol is served during the five hours from 9:00 p.m. to 2:00 a.m. Patio becomes an extension of the bar, often with its own alcohol service from a rollout bar. On Thursday, Friday, and Saturday nights, approximately 50 people wait in line in the parking lot for an hour to enter. parking lot for an hour to enter. A covered charge is charged at the door. A DJ plays dance music from 10:00 p.m. to 2:00 a.m. There is dancing with strobe lights, and the crowd inside is typically shoulder to shoulder and often violates the allowed occupancy levels. This is a classic nightclub operation. As this process drags on with no enforcement of the permit conditions, Woody's continues to operate as it wishes with complete disregard for the city and for nearby residents. Please enforce the permit conditions during this process. We ask you to support the local residents, our police department, our planning commission, and our finance department, and do not send this matter back to the planning commission, but instead deny Woody's appeal and application. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Ms. Stoddard.
Thank you.
Aaron, just to clarify, that's something you said we couldn't do. Is that not correct?
I did quite hear what you asked. What was the question?
He said for us to deny the appeal. That's something we cannot do tonight.
No, that's not something you can do this evening.
We cannot do that.
No. Because it's not, the evidence isn't before you, and they haven't brought their legal counsel here tonight. So if you're going to do that, you'll need to bring that back.
Okay, so.
Any other public comment?
Hi, my name is Norma Minor. I'm a resident of 28th Street Marina. The license is a privilege. And when you get a license to have a restaurant, you should honor that license when it is constantly being ignored and they're thumbing their nose at the council and Newport Beach. They're treating the fines, the small fines that are being charged, as just a matter of doing business. When it happens time and time and time and time again, these guys are not good neighbors. These guys are not good operators. These guys are not being fair to anyone. They're not being fair to Newport Beach. They're not being fair to the residents. If they were to honor their license the way it was issued to them, they would be closing at 11:00 o'clock, they would be offering good food and good music, and everything would be fine. It's these hours that are beyond 11:00 o'clock that's creating the problems. And I grant you that Woody's really would love to stop the music noise factor, and they are really trying to do that. I grant you that. But the fact is, when people are walking out on the patios and when the doors are open and the music is playing, music will have a tendency of spiking. And, and the band will get loud all of a sudden, or people will yell all of a sudden, and it's 1:00, 1:30, 2:00 in the morning, we're hearing spikes. That isn't fair to the people that live there. If it was a good restaurant and they operated within the limits, then we wouldn't have any problems at all. And what Chris Rolfs had to say about being a dangerous neighborhood, boy, that is so true. We have drunks coming in all the time out of Woody's. 1:00, 2:00 o'clock in the morning, coming into the 28th Street Marina, coming into our garage and urinating, doing all kinds of problems. So please don't send this back to council. These people do not deserve it. Breaking the law time and time and time again. They do not deserve to be, have this thing go back to council.
Thank you. Let me just be clear so everybody in the audience understands the options. We can send it back to the planning commission so that they can consider mitigation techniques, and you all can have another shot at them at the planning commission, or we can continue it back to the next city council meeting in two weeks, and then we'll deal with it ourselves again there, based on simply how it is now. So those are the two options. We don't have the, if you will, the legal ability to deny it, and frankly, we owe the applicant due process. Otherwise, our decisions get overturned. So that's why it's important that we follow the due process. So we're all clear about what the options are tonight. Are there any other speakers? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to bring it back to the council. The motion from Councilmember Gardner was to refer this back to the planning commission. I know Councilmember Hen has some comments she'd like to make.
Yeah, I do. I seconded the motion to send this back to the planning commission because there are some new facts that have come up, and I want to make darn sure that due process is observed on this issue regardless of the final decision. On the other hand, I seconded that motion with what you might say is a heavy heart because there has been, according to the staff report that was presented to the planning commission, the city staff feels that this operation has been operating in violation of its use permit for, I'm going to guess at least two years or more since that fact was drawn to the owner's attention. And so the residents have dealt with this issue for a long time now, waiting for due process to be completed. And I urge staff to make sure that this gets agendized at the planning commission at the earliest possible meeting. And along the way, I urge the planning commission to make sure that whatever sound studies have been completed and whatever plans are proposed to enclose the roof, that we have independent verification, in the case of sound studies that have already been done, a pure review of those studies, and in the case of plans to enclose the roof, a pure review of those plans, along with an expectation established as to what the reduction in sound would be as it relates to those plans. I think it's extremely important. This issue is important not only because we've been going for two or three years now with this, but because it's going to be very important in the future, not just for the residents of 28th Street Marina. We've got a brand-new development that is now, finally, after a long period of time, in the process of moving forward. And that's the, it's called the Newport Marina project, the Newport Bay project, what is it? The Bay Marina? What's the name of it? What are we calling it now?
The Newport Bay Marina.
Newport Bay Marina. It's the old South Coast Shipyards property between Woody's Wharf and the Crab Cooker, and that's going to be built with something like 28 residential units over visitor-serving ground-floor development. And as I understand it, those will be for-sale units for likely large amounts of money and being situated immediately next to Woody's. So we need to be darn sure that we're making a very carefully considered decision here. And that requirement cuts both ways. We should make sure we've, we've darn well had a good due process, and we should make sure that when we do make a decision, it's in light of the best facts that we can generate. So, you know, with those comments, I once again will reiterate my second to Councilmember Gardner's motion, and would like to make sure that those comments are passed along to the planning commission along with this motion.
Thank you. Mr. Hen, Councilmember Gardner.
Yes, I think that there are some shortcomings in what was presented to us in that we conditioned something about the dancing, we conditioned something about the music, but I don't think there were conditions about the waiting in line and that sort of thing, which can be a very big issue and which we have helped in the past. So that's something else that if the planning commission doesn't consider this, we might want to consider later down the road.
I would just second those comments, both from you and from Mr. Hen, and I'm pleased that the applicant is willing to meet with the residents because I think there's a lot of work to do with your neighborly relations with this project, and hopefully we'll have some positive outcome of that during the course of these discussions.
Mayor, may I make one other quick comment?
Mr. Hen.
I would encourage the residents to meet with the representatives of Woody and take a look at that sound study. You should do that. You also should make your conclusions in the basis of all the best facts available to you, even those generated by people that you might disagree with. So I do encourage you to do that.
All right. If there's no further comment, please vote.
With Mayor Protem Hill recusing himself, the motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Item 13, City Hall Complex Reuse Project. I see that this is recommended to be continued to March 26th.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Curry. After publication of the notice for...
May I interrupt for just a moment? I have a business relationship with a business in the Vialito Plaza, and will therefore be recusing myself in an abundance of caution as to conflict of issues, interest issues.
Thank you, Mr. Hen.
Again, Mayor Curry, this item is for the general plan amendment, the rezone and coastal land use plan amendments for the city hall property located at 3300 Newport Boulevard. After we published the notice for this hearing this evening, we did discover that there is a deficiency in the notice, and therefore we want to renotice for March 26th. So we will return on this item in two weeks.
All right, thank you. The recommendation is to continue this to March 26th. Is there a motion to that? I'll get public comment here then if we have a motion.
They'll move.
Motion in a second. Is there public comment on this matter? Please come forward.
Thank you, Mayor Curry and members of the council. My name is Jim Mosher. Since the public will only have three minutes in two weeks from now, I use this opportunity to put in one brief comment. As I understand it...
Note that the public will have all the time that the public wishes to speak. Each speaker will have three minutes.
Thank you for the correction. What I wanted to tell you is that as I understand it, from what I heard at the planning commission, one of the reasons for rushing this item through, which is the rezoning of the existing city hall site involving change of the general plan, before you've decided exactly what you want to do with that property is because it is thought that this needs to be presented to the coastal commission sooner rather than later. And what I would like to suggest is that this is perhaps a flawed strategy. Because as it was presented to the planning commission, what in two weeks you will be asking to approve is not a change to the general plan that will allow a hotel or a residential complex, but it is a hotel, a residential complex, or both. And I think the planning commission, as I would, and the coastal commission, are going to have great trouble visualizing a hotel and a residential complex all on top of each other, which is what the new amendment to the general plan would allow, and therefore they'll find this even more difficult to approve than they otherwise would. So I would respectfully like to suggest that you hold off changing the general plan until you yourselves have a clearer plan for what you want to do with the property. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council. Any council comments? Seeing none, please vote.
With Councilmember Hen recusing himself, the motion carries 6-0.
Thank you. Item 14, revisions to previously adopted resolutions for general plan and coastal land use permit amendments. Ms. Brandt?
Thank you, Mayor Curry. This is a resolution that we are asking the city council to adopt, which adds additional information to previous resolutions that the city council considered for both general plan and local coastal land use plan amendments. They were for properties located on West Coast Highway and on 15th Street, as well as Vialito and Via, excuse me, or Porto. We had submitted the documents for the coastal land use plan amendments to the California Coastal Commission on their review of the information. They indicated that the resolutions adopting the proposed changes to the coastal land use plan were deficient in some of the findings and direction. Therefore, we have included a resolution that adds that needed information to the previous resolutions so that these, our applications with the coastal commission can be determined complete, and then they can take action. I can go into further detail if you wish, but that is the purpose of the resolution that's before you this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Brandt. Is there a... Ms. Carter?
I just wanted to clarify. So this isn't changing anything. The Frog House doesn't have to worry about becoming something other than the Frog House for the time being. This is just sort of a ministerial thing to make it easier to pass?
What it is, is that the coastal act requires certain findings to be included in the amendments to the coastal land use plan. Those findings were inadvertently left out of the resolutions that the city council adopted. So we are just adding that information to the resolutions, and therefore our application at that time can be deemed complete. So the Frog House, despite any future encounters with a prince, will still, or, excuse me, a princess, will still remain a frog.
All right, thank you. Mr. Petros?
Yes, Mayor Curry, it never ceases to amaze me how polite Ms. Brandt can be on review of those chapters that have been cited of the coastal commission. This, to me, is evidence again of the, in my humble opinion, the arrogance of the coastal commission. These have nothing to do with the substantive issues of the properties, the projects, or the actions we took, but are an indication of their primacy over our discretion of land use. Thank you.
Well taken. Any further discussion? Is there a motion?
Second.
Motion in second. Is there public comment on this matter? Please come forward. All right, seeing none, if there's no further council comment, please vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
Item 15, initiation of a general plan amendment for the 2014 to 2021 housing element.
Yes, again, Mayor Curry, this is an action that staff is requesting of the city council in conformance with your policy K1, which requires city council approval of any initiation or procedure to amend the city's general plan. I think that Councilmember Dagel gave an excellent overview of the housing element update that's currently in process, and this is one of the first formal steps that is needed to complete the overall revisions to the housing element in order to conform to the most recent state law regarding, regarding housing element provisions over a certain time period. The housing element is the only element contained within the general plan that the state law has very, very distinct schedules that cities must adhere to in order to have a conforming and consistent housing element and have a very adequate general plan from a legal standpoint. We anticipate having a community workshop at the end of the month regarding the initial draft of the housing element. We will be taking that document to the Ad Hoc Affordable Housing Task Force either late in March or early April for their input and review. We intend to go to the planning commission at the end of April and hopefully get to the city council in May of this year. Once we have the city council's recommendations on the draft document, we'll submit it to the state of California for review and comment. And it is our goal to have the element certified as complete by the end of this calendar year. So that's an overview of the process. I do just want to add one side note, as I believe Councilmember Dagel's indicated in her remarks, that this is an update to the housing element that we just most recently adopted in 2011, or, excuse me, received the certification from the state of California.
Thank you. Any comments? All right, seeing none, let me open this up to public comment. Is there one in the audience who'd like to speak on this matter? Seeing none, let me bring it back to the council. Is there a motion?
Move. Second.
Motion in second. If seeing no further discussion, please vote.
I just want to note that I accidentally showed the, the motion title for this item for the previous item. The previous item was adopted 7-0, and this item also is adopted unanimously for item 15.
Thank you. Motion for reconsideration?
A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the city council. Either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
Is there a motion for reconsideration?
All right, seeing none, we have a sad duty tonight to adjourn this meeting in honor of Joel Kiff, Dave's dad. Joel passed away today at 74 years old after a short illness. His ties to Newport Beach are through his son. He loved to visit here at least once a year and took great pride in talking about the community and his son's role. I'm told that he would even watch us on the web sometimes from Northern California. He was a math and social studies teacher, a high school football and track coach, and then upon retirement, a full-time farmer. As proud as he was of Dave, he was equally proud of four other children and their spouses, his wife of 54 years, Irene, his eight grandchildren, and his family farm where the summer melons were the talk of the town. We adjourn tonight in honor of Joel Kiff.